Raise your right hand. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of Indiana, and the laws of the United States, and the state of India. I will faithfully execute the duties of my office as a member of this governing body to help the God. Congratulations. Raise your right hand. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of Indiana, and the laws of the United States, and the state of India. I will faithfully execute the duties of my office as a member of this governing body to help the God. Congratulations. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of Indiana, and the laws of the United States, and the state of India. I will faithfully execute the duties of my office as a member of this governing body to help the God. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Mr. Manor. Do we have any green cards at this time?
No, we do not present any.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we're getting ready to move to our next important section, and before we do that, I would like to have some comments. As a Christian, I want to thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for leading me, guiding me, and directing me. Next, I want to thank all of my fellow board members and Dr. Hanson, our superintendent, for all of your support this year. I have enjoyed having the opportunity to serve you as president of the board. I want to thank all the teachers, administrators, all staff, parents, students, and community for your support. John Quincy Adams once said, "If your actions inspire others to dream more, learn more, do more, and become more, then you are a leader." I sincerely hope that I have achieved these things while I serve you as president this year. Now the time has come to pass the baton. A leader planning for his or her succession is like passing the baton in a relay race. The ability to pass the baton successfully determines the ongoing success of the organization and the leader's legacy. A proper passing of the baton is the crucial part of the race. The one passing the baton must keep running full steam until the baton is passed. The one receiving the baton must start running before he or she receives it. The receiver does not begin from a standstill, but is already moving and gaining speed. Both runners must remain in the same lane. To step outside the lanes forfeits the race. In leadership, the one receiving the baton cannot have a totally different agenda from the one passing it on. The baton must be passed in a timely fashion. The transition cannot be extended indefinitely. A leader needs to decisively let go of control when transitioning out of his or her role. If the exchange is handed properly, it's possible to gain a step in transition instead of losing a step. Once the baton is exchanged, those passing on the baton do not run alongside the next runner as a coach. Rather, they run to the finish line to cheer on their successor. Therefore, it is time for me to let go, move on, move out of the way, and assume the role of a strong support team member and cheer on my successor. Our lawyer, Andrew Manor, will facilitate the passing of the baton. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
As by Indiana Coats, tonight is your reorganization meeting for looking at your officers for 2023.
I would like to nominate Howard Dorsey as president.
Okay, Mrs. Williams, nominate Mr. Dorsey. Is there a second?
I second.
Nomination and a second for Mr. Howard as president.
Andrew, can you see if your microphone's on?
Nomination and second.
Oh, there you go.
How's that? We'll start over. We have a nomination for Mr. Howard and a second. Any discussion? Are there any other nominations for president? Hearing none?
I'll nominate Terry Amos.
Okay, Mrs. French, we have a nomination for Terry Amos as president. Is there a second?
I'll second the nomination.
Okay, we have a nomination for Ms. Amos as president, Mrs. Burke with a second. All right, so we'll start any discussion, before I move on, any discussion on the second nomination. Okay, we'll start with the primary nomination for Mr. Howard, and I would suggest we do this by individual roll call vote to make sure we're clear for the record. We'll start at the far left for the nomination of Mr. Howard for president. Say aye or nay, Mrs. French?
Nay.
Okay, Mr. Humphrey. Okay, Mr. Howard, or Mr. Dorsey?
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Mrs. Amos? And Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
And Mrs. Triplett?
Aye.
Okay, if I've got this correctly, we have, the ayes have a majority support for Mr. Howard as president. The second would not really be needed to go forward, so we have a new president in Mr. Howard, Mr. Dorsey, excuse me, sir. Mr. Dorsey, I would continue to help with the vice president and secretary unless you want to take over, sir.
Continue.
Okay, for nomination for vice president, do we have a nomination?
I'll nominate LaShawna Triplett.
I second.
Who is our second? Okay, I had Mrs. Burke for the nomination and Mrs. Williams for the second. We have a nomination then for Mrs. Triplett as vice president. Is there any discussion? Are there any other nominations for vice president? All right, all those in favor of Mrs. Triplett as vice president, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, just to clarify, we have unanimous for vice president. All right, congratulations. And for secretary, do I entertain a nomination?
I would like to nominate Rachel Burke.
Okay, Mrs. Burke nominated by Mrs. Triplett. Is there a second?
Uh, okay.
Mrs. Amos as a second. So we have a nomination and a second for Mrs. Burke as secretary. Any discussion? Is there any other nomination for secretary?
I wanted to nominate Julie French for secretary.
I respectfully decline.
Oh, okay.
All right, so, Mrs. Williams, you draw that nomination?
Yes, I withdraw.
All right, so we have a one nomination for secretary, Mrs. Burke, as the candidate, and all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Unanimous for secretary, congratulations. You have reorganized your officers. President Dorsey, you now have some appointments, starting with legislative liaison. Again, I'll defer to you, or I can walk you down through those.
I can take this.
Sure, absolutely. Congratulations, officers.
I see there are about fifteen remaining agenda items, so we're gonna, we're gonna move right along. The next order of business is the appointment of the liaison and liaisons and the representative. But first, let me say, thank you, Mr. Andrews, for facilitating the elections.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Gloria, for the nomination, and thank you, board members, for your majority Agenda five has three appointments that I'd like to, motion made to continue the appointment of Julie French, to continue her appointment as liaison, legislative liaison. I'd like Rachel Birch to continue as the ISBA policy liaison, and the appointment of representative to the Warren Arts and Education Foundation, LaShawna Triplett. We need someone to make a motion.
I make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second. I make the motion.
Okay, Gloria made the move, made the motion, and Ms. Amos seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign? The motion is approved. The next, the next order of business is to establish meetings, dates, times, and places for the, or place for the Board of Education meetings. All school board meetings will be, again, at seven AM in the boardroom. Seven, what did I say, AM? Good morning. Good morning. Seven PM in the boardroom located here, nine seventy-five North Post Road, and streamed School board agendas and minutes can be viewed on the board docs websites through the MSD Warren Township website at wwwwarren.k12.in.us. The next meeting date will be February the fifteenth, and subsequently, the meetings will occur March the fifteenth, April the nineteenth, May seventeenth, June twenty-first, July nineteen, August sixteen, September twenty, October twenty-five. I believe that'll be the fourth Wednesday. All other board meetings, of course, will be the third Wednesdays, December the twentieth and January tenth, which will be on the second Wednesday of January two thousand twenty-four.
So moved.
All right. I like that. Move them right along. And who do we have seconding?
LaShawna.
LaShawna?
Yes.
Okay. Julie moved that we, that we accept that, the listing for the board dates, and Ms. Triplett second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any discussion? The list is approved. The next order of business is conflict of interest, and each year, the board members need to complete a conflict of interest form. Is that, we should have the forms in our, we've all got the forms? Good, good, good. Okay, I, I don't believe we need to have those turned in today, but would you like to have signatures today?
Just whenever you can get them to me, then I will close them into the database.
Okay, good, good, good. So, let's not, let's take care of that, okay, at some point. Okay, good, 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 so let's not, let's take care of that, okay, at some point. Next meeting, fine, the 18th, good. The next item of interest is the next agenda item, agenda eight, is establishing yearly stipends and per diem. Board members currently receive a stipend of $2,000 per year for their service. In addition, they may receive a meeting per diem of $112 for regular board meetings and $62 for special meetings. Executive sessions, meetings of committees established by the board are attendance at national or state board events. In addition, board members attending national or state board events include an overnight stay will receive a per diem meal expense payment of $35 in lieu of meal reimbursement. That's resolution 609.23, Indiana Code 202647. Can I get a motion to accept the?
I'll make a motion.
Can I second?
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any discussion? The motion is passed. The next order of business goes to Dr. Hanson. I believe you have a few appointments you'd like to recommend to the board for approval.
Yes, I do, President Dorsey. At this time, the board must appoint a treasurer who may not be a member of the board nor the superintendent of schools. We also appoint a deputy treasurer to act in the absence of the treasurer. The recommendation is to appoint Matthew Parkinson as treasurer and Lisa Hedge as deputy treasurer.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Any discussion? Motion passed.
The board needs to appoint attorney, an attorney of record. The recommendation is to appoint Church, Church, Hiddle, and Antrim as the attorney of record.
I'll second. I did.
Okay, it was properly moved by Ms. Williams and seconded by Ms. Burke? Okay.
Sorry.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? Motion passed.
Board, real quickly, a few highlights since the last time we met. First, welcome, Mr. Humphrey, to the board, look forward to working with you. Happy New Year, everyone. If you remember, the Friday before we left for break was a very cold day, and we shifted to an e-learning day on that day. It was an asynchronous day, which means that our students did not, were not required to meet with their teachers virtually. By state law, we are only allowed to have three of those days. February 21st was our third of those three days, which we will now need to shift to a synchronous e-learning day, which will require our teachers to schedule time with their students. This was in my Wednesday call today, it will continue to be my call, and we'll have more details with, to our parents as we get closer to that date. Many of you were able to attend an exciting event that we held over break. Governor Holcomb was at Liberty Park announcing his agenda for the upcoming legislative session. That was a great opportunity for us to spotlight Warren Township and the Eastside Community. A lot of things Governor Holcomb shared, I think, both on the education landscape and the other priorities he presented would benefit here, us here in Warren. Board, just a reminder that we have a work session next Wednesday. It is an executive session, Mr. Manon will be doing a board orientation with us, and I will be providing you an update on my superintendent goals and progress. Community, our upcoming July, January, July, I wish it was July. January 28th legislative forum is coming up, 9:00 to 11:00 here in this building. Kim, respondents from all of our legislators?
Hold it, we've had two that have not responded yet, like John.
We'll reach out to those legislators and see if they can attend. Board, as part of our 3E grant, our coaching partner with this grant is Forward Next Generation Learning. They will be doing an onsite school visit in many of our schools from February 6th to the 10th. Board members will be invited to do a focus group on February 10th. I think it's 10:30 in the morning, we'll get that invitation out to you specifically if you're able to attend. I think we'll have a virtual option and a in-person option. As I mentioned, December 23rd, that cold weather caused a lot of issues for our buildings. And I want to give a Warren Will shout-out to our maintenance and porter team, who worked tirelessly over break to make sure that all of our buildings were ready to go for this past Monday. So thank you to those folks for stepping in and up to take care of everything that happened because of that. I also want to give a Warren Will shout-out to Justin Osborne and our tech team, Steve Jewell and our maintenance team, and Jason Brooks, our principal at Liberty Park, for all the efforts they did working with the governor's team to have him in Warren.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson.
Sorry.
Thank you, no. Our next order of business is for the board comments. And we'll start on my far left with Ms. Triplett.
Good evening, everyone. I thank you, board, for the nomination and the election for vice president. This month has been a month of just doing community outreach with our families and working a lot with MCRC and the attendants and working with our youth who have been struggling, you know, academically, just providing some direct contact with those families and doing community outings, so that's about it for this month. Oh, and I attended the governor's press release.
Rachel?
So it's been a short time since our last meeting. I did attend the reindeer days at Sunny Heights and got to read to two classrooms, although I did not get to pet the reindeer because I was reading when the reindeer were being pet. But that's okay, I love the children more than I love the reindeer, so that's good. I also attended Governor Holcomb's press conference at Liberty Park, where he released his budget requests, as well as a Legislative Action Network webinar for ISBA, and in our Public Schools Work Meeting. And then I went on a middle school field trip for two nights to lovely Westlake, Ohio.
Ms. Amos?
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Humphrey, it's nice to have you on, congratulations to everyone on our officers. I want to first shout-out our Warren Police, recognize them for all their hard work. It was National Police Week and appreciate them. Also want to thank Chartwells for the nice goodies and celebrating us for School Board Week. I also was able to go to the governor press release, that was very interesting. Some exciting news that came out is hopefully that textbook rentals will be a thing of the past. Want to highlight a couple of things that I've seen. Our girls' state wrestling team is wrestling this Saturday at Moore'sville High School. I'm cheering for our Savage Seven. The matches will be streamed online on the tracking website, or on the web, the track wrestling website, yes. Saturday, our boys' wrestling team will be fighting for a McTitle championship, so I want to wish both the boys and girls good luck. Our boys' basketball team is probably already started their game against Ben Davis. They're playing their second round in the Marion County Conference, so good luck to our boys. Want to shout-out the Science Olympiad, as they did an amazing job coming in eighth this weekend. I think their team is showing great progress and that through time, they'll continue to grow and achieve more. Want to give a good shout-out to our robotics team, since they have a big build ahead of them. And I just, if I missed, I know I missed a lot of other organizations and clubs in the district, but we are cheering for you and we hope that you always give your personal best. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Well, I'll try to keep it short and sweet. First of all, I would like to say congratulations to Howard, LaShawna, and also to Rachel. So congratulations. And I would like to welcome Kevin, and we're happy to have you aboard. All right, as a matter of fact, we will be attending a new board member seminar on January the 21st. And guess what, you guys? We were nominated as an exemplary board. That is one of the highest status that you can receive. And so we will receive that honor later on in the spring. However, they asked our board to attend this meeting to talk on a panel. Dr. Hanson, myself, and Howard Dorsey will be on the panel talking about communication between the superintendent and the board. So we're excited about that, and, you know, I think we are a great board. We work really well together, I like that. I would like to thank Terry, too, for being so caring and so dedicated. I mean, her heart is just in everything that she does, and I just want you to know, Terry, that it's not going unnoticed. I appreciate you. I did attend the governor's conference also, and also I did read, instead of reading, I liked storytelling, I create my own stories. So I did storytelling to my class of a story that I made up a long time ago about the Big Belly Man. So they really, really enjoyed it. So with that, I told you I was going to keep it short and sweet. And I want to say, I really did enjoy being president of the board. I'm going to miss it, but I know it's in good hands. Pass it right on, Kevin.
Thank you, Gloria. Kevin?
Well, I'd just say, thank you for all those who helped me get in this position, and I'm excited to be here, and I'm looking forward to working with everyone, getting to learn the system and learn what I can do and how I can contribute and be a positive, positive influence upon the community, and can continue to help serve the kids, as I've been previously done only through sports, but I'm anxious to help in any area I can. So, thank you very much.
Julie?
I'm going to take my time real quick and just do a real quick ledge update, just because it's not on our agenda, and hopefully then in the rest of the months, we can have a little spot for that. A lot of the bills are out, there are still a few days left that people can put some out there. Some that we need to keep an eye on is harmful materials to minors. There is one that made it to the Education Committee, I think it's 11:30, so we want to keep an eye on that one. That is the, the library books one, so. There's a lot out there on school board elections, they want to make it partisan. You know, that's my pet peeve, I think we're supposed to be here doing what is in the best of interest of the children, not the political parties, and I will shout that to the rooftop, and I hope you all will help me with that. There were a few out there on financial literacy, curts of writing, there's one on complexity index. And I have to say, Terry, your principal has taken off running. She has put out about three different bills that I've seen so far. One is contributions to school board PACs, limiting the amount that can go to that. Charter school training, requiring the teachers to do a lot of the trainings that the traditional public school teachers have to do. And there's another one on teacher unreimbursed education expenditures, raising the amount on that. So she's, as a new senator, is taking the ball and is running with it, so. There are some student health ones out there, Medicaid reimbursement for school psychologists, there's income tax credits for people donating to traditional public schools. We see a lot of that for the public schools or whatever, but this one's specifically for traditional public schools. And the governor said six, he would like to see a 6% increase for public schools for the first year and 2% on the second year. It's nice, that's a good chunk of change, but it's still a little bit less than what the inflation is, so. Let's be positive and encourage them to give a little bit more, because it's, we're still going to be behind, even though that's a nice chunk of change, and they're talking about that it's the largest increase. It is, it is, but it's still going to put public schools in a, not as pleasant place as what we'd like to be, so. I am still looking at them, I'm still checking through them all, a lot of them popped up, and I'm on the House side of it, and still have a few bills to look at, but I'll have more next month for you. And we will have our legislative forum, where hopefully you can all attend, and we can, so, thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Kevin, just want to say, congratulations, welcome aboard. Ms. Triplett, congratulations? Rachel, congrats. I had a chance to go to, while I was in, our school had a break that wasn't aligned with Warren's break, winter break. And so I had a chance, since I was off, had a chance to visit Sunny Heights. And I tell you what, I had never seen a reindeer before. I saw a reindeer. They, they had a reindeer and a lot of other petting animals, but the reindeer was truly amazing. And so, anyway, I had to hang out with some kids there, and we had a lot of fun, really had a lot of fun. And I also had a chance to go by the childcare facility, childcare center. I hadn't been there in a while, and man, it was, it was, it was really amazing. The educators there just had the kids all in tow, the kids were having a great time. There was a lot of learning going on. You know, when kids go from, kids who have never been to a childcare facility and show up in kindergarten for the first time, and they're standing next to kids who have been through childcare programs, you can really tell the difference. And our kids were learning, are learning stuff that I know when they roll into first grade or kindergarten and first grade, they're just going to just blow some people away, because they're just so, they seem to be so much more mature. And so I think that's what we're going to see when these kids, you know, gravitate to kindergarten and first grade and that sort of thing, so just wanted to, wanted to mention that. It was, it was a great, I hope you all had a great winter, Christmas holiday. And so, that's, that's about it, let's, we'll now move on. The next order of business is the consent agenda. The, let me back up, board correspondents, do we have any?
No, we do not.
Okay, good, 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 okay. Now, let's move on to agenda item 13, which is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of approval of minutes, financial report, payroll claim, financial report, claim, register, and electronic payments, financial report, year-to-date summary of fund balance, human resource report, field trip requests for wrestling and choir, permission to accept gifts, grants, change orders, contracts, use of school property, and we had no requests for special events or conflict of interests.
So moved.
I second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? Consent agenda is passed. Do we have any yellow cards? Because I think we're in the business of the citizens.
No, we did not.
No yellow cards, okay. The first, we have an action item, the referendum tax levy, and?
That will kick us off, that's okay?
Good.
Board, I just want to bring to your attention-
Board, I just want to bring to your attention that the field trip request you approved is for our Warren Central High School Choir to perform at Carnegie Hall.
Ooh, all right.
It's gonna be a little ways out, but we are preparing for that now. Board, about five years ago, we came to you and asked you to approve the resolution to enter into a referendum. That referendum's focus was school safety and security, staff retention and recruitment, student learning, transportation, and student devices. In May of 2018, we asked our community to support that referendum, and they overwhelmingly supported that referendum. Tonight, and since 2018, a lot has happened with pandemic, our labor market, and just increased need. We've been able to put a lot of programs and supports in place for our students with some short-term money, mainly through ESER. And we want to be able to sustain those programs. Tonight, Matt Parkinson will share some information with you. And we will again ask for your support to repeal and replace our current referendum and enter into a new one on May 2nd, 2023. So, with that, I will turn it over to Matt. And he will share some information for you, and then we will ask for your action.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening about the operating referendum. This is the second month in a row that we've had a conversation on this topic. And as Dr. Hanson mentioned, this evening, we're gonna ask the board to approve a resolution placing a referendum on the ballot in May 2023. The operating referendum discussion broadly pertains to the school board's goal of maintaining financial stability. And in the same way, providing for the safety and security of the students and staff of the MSD Warren Township. And as part of our strategic plan focus area, investing in efficiencies and our environment. So, board members, I want to discuss the referendum timeline. And this is about the 2023 referendum. As Dr. Hanson mentioned, the original referendum, the one that's in place now, the community approved in 2018 by a margin of 65 to 35. So, this evening, January 11th, we're going to ask the board to approve a new resolution that authorizes the school district to place a referendum on the ballot in May 2023. If the board provides that approval this evening, tomorrow, Jeff Quackenbush and I will send notice to the State Department of Local Government Finance seeking their approval for the ballot language. So, the language itself, we have a draft that we'll show tonight. That's subject to state approval. They'll have 10 days from that point to get back to us and let us know if that language is acceptable, if we need to make any modifications. As part of the resolution, we're asking the board to grant Dr. Hanson and me authority to make any modifications. I don't anticipate anything substantial. No later than February 17th, we'll submit the ballot language to the county clerk and to the city-county council. And then, on May 2nd, the community will have an opportunity to vote on the referendum. So, I've placed in front of you the ballot question. I'm not going to read it line for line. What I'll share with you is that the five categories Dr. Hanson mentioned are the same five categories from 2018 to today. We've modified the wording slightly just to, you know, reflect what we anticipate using the money for over the next eight years. But broadly, again, five categories. Safety, staff retention, student learning, transportation, technology. So, board members, members of the community, if we're successful with the referendum in May, one of the things that we want to make clear is that this will repeal and replace the 2018 referendum. So, we're not proposing to stack two referendum rates on top of each other. Instead, if the community supports the referendum, our proposal is to repeal the 2018 fund, replace it with the 2023 fund. Again, our five areas of focus, transportation, staff retention, technology, school safety and security, student learning. We'll be repeating those themes over and over every chance we get as we engage with the community over the next four months. So, board members, one thing that's different from when we considered the referendum in 2018 is we're required by state statute to provide a referendum spending plan. And so, our spending proposal that we've drafted for this referendum is in front of us here. The categories are gonna remain the same throughout the life of the referendum. It's possible dollar amounts year to year may change a bit as we identify different needs. We're proposing in 2024, if the referendum's successful, we anticipate having a little over $11 million in our referendum fund. The breakdown of what we're proposing to spend in 2024 can be seen here. $3 million on transportation, $2.8 million on staff retention, professional development and family engagement, $1.5 million on technology, $1.6 million, safety and security, and then $2.1 million, student learning, college and career readiness. So, I do want to take just a minute or two to talk with the board and talk with the community about one thing that's gonna be a reality for us as we discuss the referendum. And it's a difference this time compared to what the community saw in 2018. A couple of years ago, the General Assembly changed the language, the ballot language that appears for voters. And to be very candid, it's confusing. To the average person who sees a ballot question, it's confusing to try to interpret what it's saying. So, if you go back to the ballot question, what you'll notice at the bottom is that there are percentages. And it's going to indicate that the referendum, to the average reader, they're gonna see that the referendum will increase taxes by 29% for those with a homestead, 21% for those with a business property. Those figures are misleading for two reasons. The first one is, it's calculated as if there was not a referendum already in place. So, here at MSD Warren Township, we're authorized to levy a referendum rate up to 21 cents, 21 cents per $100 of taxable assessed value. The rate that we're asking the community to support is 30 cents of $100 taxable value. But again, the ballot question assumes that we don't have a referendum in place at all. The second portion of it that's confusing is that the percentage increase is in regards to the referendum dollars that will be paid to the school district. It's not the overall increase in an individual taxpayer's taxes. So, to be clear, the referendum will not increase homestead taxes by 29.4%. The referendum will not increase business taxes by 21.7%. It's a flat 30-cent property tax rate that would be applied uniformly across all types of property taxpayers. Here in MSD Warren Township, our average, our median, homestead assessed value is $147,868. The net assessed value, after taking out the homestead, supplemental homestead, and mortgage deductions on that property is $63,864. Again, the maximum rate that we're asking the community to support in this 2023 referendum would be 30 cents per $100 of taxable assessed value. In 2018, the rate was 21 cents per $100 of assessed value. And so, the difference is nine cents per $100 of taxable assessed value. The bottom line for the median homeowner in our community is that the projected impact is just under $5 per month. It's not a 29% increase. It's not a 21% increase. It's more like a 4% increase. $5 per month is the bottom line for our average homeowner. I want to talk about the referendum at MSD Warren relative to our peers. I've got two charts that I'm going to share with the school board and share with the community. So, in Marion County, nine of the school districts of the 11 in Marion County have passed a property tax referendum, either operating, like we have here at MSD Warren, capital, or both. And so, what we have displayed on this chart is the rate for all of the school districts in Marion County that have passed a referendum. Our current maximum rate is 21 cents. So, this is taking a look at the actual rates on the 2022 property tax bills, 2022 certified budget orders. We have the lowest rate in Marion County on our referendum out of any school district that has passed a referendum. If we're successful, the maximum rate we'll be allowed to impose is 30 cents, which moves us up to the middle of the county, again, below five of our peers, even if we're successful on this new referendum. Then, the second chart that I want to call to the boards and to the community's attention is the referendum levy dollars generated per student. So, again, for us, of all the school districts in the county that have passed a referendum, operating, capital, or both, MSD Warren Township at $539 in 2022 collected the lowest dollar amount per student. If we're successful in this referendum, we will still collect the lowest referendum property tax dollar amount per student. The message that I'm hoping to convey is, we've attempted to put together a proposal that we believe the community can support. We believe we're being conservative. We're asking for support that's within our means and, again, well in line and in many cases below what our peers have. So, school board members, and this is my final slide. The referendum fund is a critical investment from the community in addressing our school district's needs. We're asking the school board and we're asking the community to approve an operating referendum in 2023 to take the place of the 2018 operating referendum. A successful referendum this spring will allow us to build on the successes that we already have in place through our referendum fund, plus some of the measures we've been able to get in place through federal funding over the last couple of years. Board members, I'd ask for your support on the referendum, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Matt, I'm curious. How are we, I'd like that five cents, you know, showing a real low hit on the taxpayer. How is the taxpayer getting that information?
Yeah, I appreciate the question. The question is, how is the taxpayer going to be able to learn what the impact is to them? By this time tomorrow, we will have a calculator on our website that a voter or a taxpayer can go to. It's a very simple tool. They can type in the value of their homestead or the value of their business, and it will calculate for that individual assessed value for that individual taxpayer what the difference is. If you're a taxpayer whose home is valued at less than the median, less than that $148,000, it'll be less than $5. If you have a home that's valued at more, a business that's valued at more, the dollar amount will be more. But again, to answer the question directly, a taxpayer by this time tomorrow will be able to go to our website, use a calculator to identify what the impact is on their individual property.
How do they know they can go there? What are we doing to tell them?
Yeah, so, we already have it on, for somebody who goes to our website, we have a banner on the bottom that has a number of buttons. The very first button that some I can see is referendum 2023. We have information that we've posted online about what the referendum is for 2023, how we use $2018, and a lot of the information that we covered this evening. We'll also be providing information to our community through emails and through social media and 10 times 10 ways, as Dr. Hanson likes to say.
Are we having any kind of forums where we're bringing people in and saying, hey, we're gonna explain this to you face to face?
Sure. Yeah, we do have opportunities to speak with our community. One of the next ones that we have scheduled is we're gonna have a safety forum, just like we did shortly before the last semester ended. And, you know, safety and security is a critical part of what we're funding today through our operating referendum. The entire MSD Warren Township Police Force is funded out of the referendum fund. A lot of the key supplies that we've bought to keep our students and our staff safe paid for out of the operating referendum fund. So, that's one forum that we're gonna have an opportunity to speak to the community about this.
I'd like to make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign?
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, closing comments. And we'll start on this end this time.
Okay, for my closing comments, I'm gonna now go back to robotics because this past Saturday was our robotics kickoff. We learned our game. I'm trying to stay positive about it. We had a game in the past called Recycle Rush, which wasn't the most favorite game in the world. This one probably is a little bit better than that one. But we're hoping, we're trying to come up with ways to make it exciting. We've been looking at shooting, maybe possibly shooting off some of these things that we're hooking on. It'll be a fun game because they'll always have fun. They'll get to build. We're using Swerve wheels. I've already taken the first batch of stuff to Colors Inc., which is very good about anodizing our parts so that they are beautifully black and gold for our school colors. And so, I've got those out in my car now to take on Saturday when the kids are working. So, it'll be a good time. We'll have a great time with it.
Kevin? Okay, okay. Well, let me stop what I'm doing. I just want to say that with the referendum coming up, we just need to be more mindful of what's going on. And we should become, I guess, kind of educated in knowing what's happening so that if we are approached, that we can speak reasonably. And I mean, I'm excited about being and telling them that, hey, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be that tough of a deal and being able to talk to the people and tell them how little we will be applying. Even though it's a larger number, but when you boil it all down down to the really essence, it sounds better that it's coming across as, you know, five bucks, I think some people will understand that. The legislative forum, looking forward to that. Should be a lot of fun. Always are. We've got board orientation coming up. And also, we've got the Ford Next Generation stuff that's coming. So, we've got a lot of stuff going on, and that's just in January. We've got a bunch of stuff coming up in the very future. And so, I'm just saying that things are looking good. I think we're in a good position. Pretty excited about where we're going. Really am. Thank you.
Well, I didn't start the evening off by saying Happy New Year. So, I want to say Happy New Year to everyone. I hope that your holiday was great because mine was fantastic. I'm looking forward to a fantastic, awesome year. And I'm excited about all the things that's coming up in Warren. And one of my New Year's resolutions is I want to try to attend a lot more of the student activities that's going on. They have plays that's coming up soon. The girls' basketball team is coming soon. The boys' basketball team is coming soon. And I know that they would love to see our faces. So, for our New Year's resolution, let's just, like he said, let's hit the ground running and show the students and everyone that Warren will be great this year. I do want to say, for last comment, I want to thank Chartwells. We walked in and, oh my gosh, they provided us with all these goodies. So, I can add on a few extra pounds. I do want to say, I'm sure gonna miss the pre-report meeting breakfast with Dr. Hanson. Oh, I tell you, I enjoyed that so much, I'm gonna miss it. He kept me, you know, kept my weight on me so that I could look nice and not puny. I'm gonna miss all those meals. But I guess the Lord is saying that I need to stop before I get a little bit too fat. Well, thank you so much, Dr. Hanson, for all those delicious meals. So, with that, I just want to say, everybody be safe going home. I hope that it's not as foggy out as it was coming. And we look forward to seeing you at the next meeting. And oh, one last thing. The room is sort of empty. Let's, for this year, each one reach one. Let's try to invite some people to our meetings that haven't been here so that they can see the great things that we're doing. Thank you.
Terry?
Thank you. Just kind of want to follow up a little bit with you, Julie. Our kids will figure this out. They love challenges and they will grow to that challenge and make it successful. Forgot about Show Choir. Show Choir has their dates and their contest on the webpage for the show choirs and things. But we just have a lot going on this year. It's nice to see our kids coming back and really being focused and really taking hold of their academics and making sure that they're getting into a club or an organization. So, with that, I'm gonna close and thank everyone for being here this evening.
Hi, so I just wanted to thank everyone for the opportunity to serve you again for another four years. It means an awful lot to me that I was reelected and that I have the ability to serve the citizens and the children of Warren Township again for another four years. Thank you.
LaShawna?
I would like to say that I am so proud of our coaches and our club leaders over break. I had to bring my son a few times and I saw them like at 6:00 in the morning. Like, our athletes and students were still here at the building. So, they still have... So they still had a full schedule. So I appreciate that and that discipline that they still have that kept them in positive engaging engagements over break. And then I also want to say for any of our public watching, Center Township will be having a eviction clinic to help anyone who has an eviction on their credit to get it removed if that eviction has been paid in full. And that workshop and those clinics are rotating. And if I'm not mistaken, next month is Warren. It'll be us hosting that. So please, if you know any families who are having difficulty with finding housing because of an eviction, please navigate them to our city's website and to our trustee's office so they can receive that free assistance. Thank you, Cabinet. I know it's a long day. We're getting out early. Enjoy. Be safe when you go home.
Okay, so it's, it's back around to me. I jumped the gun a little bit, but that's okay. I guess it's okay. Anyway, the official portion of the board meeting is now adjourned. We're now going to go to the Board of Finance meeting. And Matt, could you come up here and, and talk to us?
I would like to say Andrew Manor, thank you so much. He's...
Okay, Mr. Dorsey, thank you very much for the invitation to open up the Board of Finance meeting. So, school board members and Board of Finance members, you, you are one and the same. Just for context, the Board of Finance meeting is a meeting that we're required to hold once annually to cover two mandatory state reports. We do have a couple of official orders of business, and I'm going to walk you through reports that, that we're required to, to go through. Timing wise, we're required to hold this meeting during the month of January, which is why we do it on the school board tonight. So I guess the first thing we actually have before we appoint officers is, is we have public comment. So, Mr. Dorsey, if it's okay with you, I'll invite the public to, to speak. If, if there's anybody from the public who'd like to speak, we'd certainly grant you that opportunity. So, Mr. Dorsey, members of the board, it's common for the same officers from the school board to serve as the, the president and secretary of Board of Finance. There's not a requirement that it works that way, but it's relatively common. So, Mr. Dorsey, if it's okay with you, I'd turn it back over to you for appointment of, for nominations and appointment of president and secretary of the Board of Finance.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, Howard Dorsey, for president and secretary, Rachel Burke.
Yes. I'd say, well...
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign.
Congratulations to us.
So, so board members, we have two reports that we're going to, to cover this evening, and these are statutory reports required at the annual Board of Finance meeting, meant to provide updates to the Board of Finance, to the school board, to the community about some measures that, that, that we work with in the financial space of the school district. The first report that I'm going to cover for, for the board is the Annual Fiscal Indicators Report. So I've got a slide deck prepared. This accompanies a report that we've printed out and provided to you. I will walk through this, but by all means, at any point, if somebody has questions, please stop me and, and I'm happy to cover them. So, board goal of maintaining financial stability, investing in people, investing in efficiencies and environment. So this report is required by Indiana Code 51378. We must report on our financial condition annually. There are six metrics that we report on. These metrics are defined by the State Fiscal and Qualitative Indicators Committee, which is comprised of members of various state agencies and an IASBO representative. The data is on a calendar year basis, and there's two things I want to note here. So again, the data is calendar year. We, we operate on a fiscal year. So usually when we refer to year end, we're referring to June 30th. In the context of this report, year end is going to be December 31st. And then this is also one year, one year behind. So we're reporting on data as of December 2021. So I can certainly provide additional context about what's happened in 2022, but just encourage you to keep that in mind. This is data of, that ended roughly a year ago. So the first metric that we have to take a look at is average daily membership, or stated another way, the number of students who attend our schools. There are nine years in the report. I'm placing three throughout the slide deck, slide deck just for brevity. ADM, the, the reason that this matters is this is the primary factor in determining state revenue. So it's the main portion of the state tuition support formula. Enrollment for MSD Warren has been generally stable. We're, we're down a little bit over the, the three years that we have displayed here, but broadly speaking, stable. From a funding perspective, beginning in the 21, 22 school year, those who are virtual students are funded at 85% on the foundation component of state tuition support versus 100% for our students who attend in person. So as we look at our 824 students from last fall, 1,314 from last spring, please keep that in mind. The foundation portion of the formula is 85% on, on students who are counted that way. I do want to make one minor plug here. Ms. French mentioned legislation. We, we've seen over the last couple legislative cycles, there's an idea, a proposal out there to fund school districts for students who graduate in December. We had, I think it was 21, we had 21 students who graduated this year. For us, those students are not going to be counted in our February 2023 count. That would be to the equivalent of about $80,000 for us in our education fund if we were able to count those students. That, that would fund a teaching position or close to a teaching position. So as, as we consider legislative ideas and we, we keep our eye on legislative items, that, that is an idea that every school district in the state with an early graduate would benefit from, and we are no different. Our second of the six metrics that we have to consider is fund balances. So you'll notice in the report that we've got all funds, and then I've broken it down to primary funds. The primary funds are the, the main funds that we use. That's education, operations, debt service, operating referendum, and rainy day. Over the course of the three years, we've seen a healthy increase in our fund balances. Calendar year 2019, we were at $11.3 million. 2020, $20.5 million. 2021, $16.2. The biggest variation, and it's going to go into the next slide, the biggest variation is going to have to do with our, our debt service fund. So I'll talk about surplus, and then this one's going to break down the amounts by fund. So again, the surplus in 2019 was $36 million. 2020, negative eight. 2021, 21 million. But those numbers by themselves don't paint the whole picture. Really what's happening there is in calendar year 2019 and in calendar year 2021, we issued bonds to fund the Lowell Project in Warren Central Phase 1. And then 2021, we issued the bonds to fund the Pleasant Run Project, Grassy Creek, Warren Central Phase 2. So we did see a large influx in cash that we're spending right back down for the renovations on those projects. So the more accurate thing to look at, in my opinion, is the, the dollar amounts for the, the primary funds. So in 2019, we, we had a deficit of $1.2 million. 2020, a surplus of $9 million. 2021, deficit of $4.7 million. And really, that's going to be primarily attributable to the debt service fund. So the debt service fund is the fund that we use to raise property tax and related dollars to make payments on the bonds that support those renovation projects, plus our general obligation bonds. There's going to be some natural fluctuation in those dollar amounts, especially when considered on a calendar year end. It's mostly a function of the dollars that we pay on bond payments in June versus December. So there's going to be some natural fluctuation there. That said, we have been very diligent in the last couple of years, and it's going to be applicable in this year as well. We're working very hard to stabilize our debt service tax rate. In calendar year 2022, our debt service tax rate was 52 cents. In calendar year 2023, our debt service will be 52 cents. So we're, we're trying to stabilize that debt service tax rate, and in time, that's going to help us to also stabilize these fund balances in the debt service fund. These fluctuations are natural. Now, I do want to point to the operations fund. The operations fund is in an area of concern. We're, we're doing a lot to address some pricing and cost pressures that we face on the operations fund. As a reminder for, for the boards, for members of the community, the operations fund covers most of our non-classroom expenditures. That's, that's why we're paying for things like fuel and electric bills and property insurance. We're seeing a lot of cost increases in those areas that are really putting some cost pressures on us. So, so we've done some strategic things over the last year and a half to make sure that we're managing that fund as well as we can. We did see a big increase in circuit breaker in 2022. We expect that fortunately to go back down a bit in 2023. So our trajectory on the operations fund is going to be okay, but we do face pressures certainly on that fund. Metric number four of six is fund balances, is percentage of operating expenditures. The, the term operating here isn't our operations fund. It's instead fund balance in the combination of education, general, operating referendum, operational, and rainy day funds divided by expenditures within those funds. So over these three years, we've seen an appropriate increase in those as well. So we've gone from 9.9% to 12.9%. Our fund balances really are similar between 2020 and 2021. The, what happened in 2021 is our expenditures, is we had a full year in person or most of the year in person, as opposed to the COVID year before that, our expenditures were up. So the denominator on that fraction was larger, which is what's pushing that percentage down. I do want to point out that we have a target of a 12% fund balance in the education fund. We've been growing our education fund balance, which is good. We, we ended 2021 at an 8.1% fund balance, and again, we're, we're growing that one appropriately. When we reach that 12% mark, that's going to provide us a lot of stability on that fund. And that, that opens us up to, to making some moves relating to staff and other cost areas around our district that would really benefit our students and staff. Indicator number five is revenue by type. This is another one, again, where the data as presented by the state, it can be a little bit confusing, and so I've added a second, I've added a bottom label below this. So overall revenue fluctuated pretty wildly between 2019 and 2021, from 195 million down to 170 million, up to 227 million. But again, that, that's almost entirely due to cash that we brought in in 2019 and 2021 to fund our renovation projects. So I'd encourage board to focus on the bottom line here, which is the total backing out those revenues for, for debt. And we've seen small but stable growth in, in revenue on those non-debt items over the, the last two years. And, and while our property tax revenue is down this year, our state revenue is up in 2022. So we're, we're going to do okay on, on 2022. Bottom line here in terms of revenue is, is state revenue increased 3.1%. The growth in debt revenue, as I mentioned, is due to the issuance of those bonds. Revenue is generally stable, modest growth. Finally, the last one, this is a state indicator, is operating referendum revenue as a percentage of our total revenue. For us, we've been in that 3% to 4% range. We're going to remain in this range if the, the community supports a referendum, as we discussed earlier in our meeting this evening. We expect that to increase our revenue by about $4 million, which will push us up a little bit over the 4% mark, but this is still comparatively a small portion of our, our overall pie. And finally, last slide, just brief SWOT analysis in terms of, of our position relative to these fiscal conditions. Our, our strength is our stability through changing conditions. These last three school years have, have not been normal school years, to say the least. We've, we've managed to come through them stronger financially and, and otherwise. Weaknesses in fund balance. We, we, again, we need to continue to grow our education fund balance. We need to, to put some emphasis as well on the operations fund balance. Opportunity is to invest in the people and invest in our facilities. We've done a lot of both in the last three years. We have a lot more to get done on those areas in the years ahead. And finally, our, our major threat is, is the one I mentioned earlier. We, we really are facing some cost pressures on some of our non-personnel costs. We have to pay our electric bill. We have to pay our gas bill. We, we have to pay to fuel our buses. The more that we're paying for those items, the more challenged we are to put our money where we want it, which is in the classroom. So we're, I mean, Mr. Clayton and I are, are working diligently to try to control those costs as well as we can, and that's going to continue to be a threat in the year ahead. I'd be happy to answer any questions for the board about these indicators.
Matt, you said we're only getting 85% for our online. Do you see the state increasing that?
So, so that's a statutory amount, and, and, you know, we're in a legislative session, but I, I've not personally heard any momentum for, for making a change there.
Matt, I, I, could you go back to, to chart number three?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, this is probably insignificant, but it still speaks me, oh, no, no, let's go to four. One with the rainy day fund, where it's zero.
Uh... Did I pass it?
There we go, yeah.
Oh, sure.
I, I, could you help me understand? I think I know what the rainy day fund is, but whenever I see a zero in a chart like that, I get curious.
Yeah, absolutely. So, so the rainy day fund is, it's our emergency savings in, in the event that we have something that majorly goes wrong. We have a $3.6 million balance in our rainy day fund. What, what this particular slide is showing is, is our surplus or deficit in, in the year. So the amount that we took in versus the amount that we spent out of the fund. In 2021, we didn't put any money into the rainy day fund. We also didn't spend any money out of the rainy day fund, and so it was a, it didn't have a surplus or a deficit because we didn't add to it or take away from it.
Well, your rainy day fund is sort of like contingent, like, like, or anything that comes up, sort of like, well, it's a difference.
It is. It's an emergency savings. And my, my personal hope for it, and I, I think probably the board's hope, is we want to tap into that fund as little as possible. I mean, as close as we can get to never touching that money is our goal. It's there for, you know, for a true emergency. If, if we had a cycle where state funding was delayed for some reason, where property tax funding was delayed for some reason, or some catastrophic event that for some reason that, that would be the purpose of that fund, and so our, our goal will be to see this at, at zero on the expenditure side for as long as we can. Yes, sir.
Well, hey, thank you, Matt.
Thank you. I do, I do have one more report for you. Fortunately, this, this, this report, this report is a brief one. So this is the other one we're required by statute to report on at the annual Board of Finance meeting. It's an annual report on investments. So, so board members, in the same way, there, there is a report available to you that accompanies these slides. The slides are the summary. Same board goal, maintaining financial stability, same strategic plan focusing, focus area, investing in people, investing in efficiencies and environment. So this report is required by Indiana Code 51377. We're required to do it annually. This data is for calendar year 2022, so this one truly is current. It's for the 12 months that we just finished on December 31st, and it's a supplement to the full report that you have in front of you. So what I've placed on the slide deck for the school board's consideration is the investment income that we earned in calendar year 2022. Close to $51,000 apiece in the education and operations funds, $129,000 for construction bonds, less than $1,000 in textbook rental, for a total of $230,978. In line with school board policy and with state board of accounts policy, investment returns are placed back into the fund from which the investments were earned, interest was earned. We're allowed to, we're allowed to, to group dollars together for the purpose of investments, and we do. And then we split it back out in accordance with where we pulled that money from. Interest income improved over 2022. You know, the interest rates are, are a double edged sword. It's, it's not what we want when we're financing projects. It does work to our benefit when we have cash available, and so we earned additional interest income in 2022. So we comply with Indiana Code 5139, which states how we're allowed to invest our dollars. We also have the school board policy. I, I think the policy has a, a portion of it that phrases succinctly and well what, what we intend to do with investments. Purpose of the investments is to maximize the returns of the corporation's excess cash balances, consistent with the safety of those monies and with the desired liquidity of those investments. In other words, we make sure that the cash is always in a place we can easily get to it. We try to maximize it in the safest way that we can. So we're going to continue in 2023 to conservatively invest excess cash. I, I do think that we're, we're probably going to see some more interest income in 2023 than we have in, in recent years. So again, we, we don't like that from the, the project standpoint, but we'll take advantage from a cash standpoint. Board members, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, everything safe? We safe now?
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Well, that, that concludes that portion as well. Any questions?